Good morning, Board of Commissioners. My name is Dorian Russell and I'm the Senior Program Coordinator for your ARPA portfolio. I'm joined today by Dr. Marie Bowman-Davis, our Public Health Division Manager, and Dr. Kimberly Rep, our Chief Epidemiologist. Thank you so much for the time this morning to present on this deeply important topic. In today's presentation, we're going to provide you the best evidence that your staff scientists have for you on the status of the pandemic and also future projections, and really tee up for you how that may impact your future ARPA planning considerations. Can we move to the next slide, please? Thank you. I want to spend some time before we dig into the science, taking a moment to help ground this group. This presentation is going to build on what you already know and are experiencing in the pandemic. I want to acknowledge that this might be a difficult conversation today, but a deeply important one. There are a few things to keep in mind before we get started. First, the science continues to evolve. With your leadership and your commitment to science throughout the pandemic, you have made decisions with science in mind, and those decisions have had real community impacts. Two days ago, we reviewed the community impacts that we're seeing from your ARPA investments so far. You've remained flexible to new information, and so have your program staff. Second, we continue to be in a learning environment. And while there will be challenges described in this presentation, please remember that our tools and our responses have improved over time. We are in a much better place now than we were before in the pandemic. And as a county, our continued learning has only improved the services that we're offering. Third, I want to acknowledge I'm experiencing pandemic fatigue, and I know everyone on this call is too. I want to underscore that we all have optimism that better times are ahead. This presentation is going to show you that we are not yet out of the pandemic and show you some of the realities that we're facing right now. This content might be difficult to digest, but please remember even the staff who are looking at this data for 12 hours a day still have some optimism. And lastly, the intent of this conversation is to provide data interpretation and some background for you for those future conversations where you may need to apply this information. As Dr. Rep will tell you later in this presentation, scientists don't have a crystal ball. Even with the best statistical models that we have, we can only project so far into the future with accuracy. So again, your staff continue to stay flexible, and we all know we're in a learning environment together. Can we move to the next slide, please? And at this point, I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Bowman-Davis to get us started.
Good morning. Thank you, Dorian. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. For the benefit of the public, my name is Marie Bowman-Davis. I'm the Public Health Division Manager. Today, we will provide a little bit of background highlighting some historical data around COVID-19 here in Oregon. Talk a little bit about Omicron spread and impact. We'll try and do our best to answer some current questions about our status and projections, and when do we get to start living with COVID, and then some planning considerations for your commission. Next slide, please. Thank you. So for the benefit of the public, and just as a reminder, COVID-19 is a nationally notifiable disease. So COVID-19 is a disease caused by SARS-CoV-2. And because it's reportable nationally, that means it is reportable under Oregon state law. And so investigation and control of disease such as COVID-19 is outlined in Oregon Administrative Rules, or OARs, under Chapter 333. That's under our Oregon Health Authority, Public Health Division, 17, 18, and 19. So our Oregon Health Authority, or OHA, provides us disease investigative guidelines, also known as our IGs. Since we are still learning about the pandemic, these investigative guidelines are called interim as they continue to be updated as we have new information, new science, and new understanding. And so these investigative guidelines that the state provides here in Oregon are also the responsibility of our local public health authorities to follow these investigative guidelines. And so here in Washington County, the Board of County Commissioners are our local public health authority, and they help us with our responsibility to administer and enforce these laws and these investigative guidelines. And so our commissioners appoint a public health administrator, which is me. I was appointed in September, right before our Delta wave in the pandemic. Thank you for that honor and opportunity, and so is our responsibility in our division to support the commissioners with ensuring that we are staying in compliance. Next slide, please. And so these investigative guidelines are very long. They have lots of information, and what do they tell us? So the investigative guidelines outline our responsibilities, which include what we have here in these kind of boxes. So our case and interviews and contact tracing responsibilities, our outbreak investigation, our infection prevention and control, testing, surveillance, isolation and quarantine, and our data quality and systems. And our data quality and systems are critical, both for local and state understanding of COVID-19 in our cases and our hospitalizations in our communities. And they also help inform state decision makers who are developing our population level policy interventions such as masking and vaccination to help us reduce the spread and disproportionate burden of COVID-19. Next slide, please. So this month, February, it will be two years since Washington County responded to the very first COVID-19 identified infection in the state of Oregon. Our public health team was there onsite on day one, and Dr. Rep was a member of that team. When we look at this graph and those data that we just talked about and the importance of the quality of those data, we're seeing over the past about two years, this is up until the end of December, so February 2020 to about December 2021, we're seeing what we identified and the state has identified as surges or waves. And so each of these surges and waves are impacting our communities for about a 90-day cycle. And so here on the graph, you'll see we have five arrows of 90 days. We are currently in the sixth wave. Omicron is the sixth wave, and it is the largest wave that we've experienced statewide. It is important to note that although we are seeing downward curved curves for each wave, which is really important in our communities and how we operate, we are not returning back to baseline. Right? We still have disease in our community. And the good news is that vaccinations do help. And so here, the overlaying on the graph, there's a transparent overlay. And what that is, is our vaccination rate over time. And so we could see that in the spring and summer of last year, as we had increased availability and access to vaccinations and eligibility for vaccinations, and we were outdoors during spring and summer, we have lower disease burden in our community. Then our fifth arrow on the far right, that is when our Delta variant arrived in Oregon, which was two times more transmissible than our original strain. And so we did see an increase in cases, but notably, we also had increases in vaccinations, which helped protect our community from severe disease illness and hospitalizations and death. Omicron, which we're experiencing now, is six times more transmissible than Delta, and we are seeing breakthrough cases, which means persons that have been vaccinated can develop COVID-19. However, they, in general, are experiencing less severe disease, which is great. That means the vaccine is working. Next slide, please. So just for fun, we talk about Delta and Omicron, all the different names, the variants, right? So there is international surveillance of SARS-CoV-2 and genetic lineages. There are many more that are being tracked than we have experience within our community. There are variants of interest and variants of concern. And so internationally, nationally, and here in even Oregon, this is our Oregon tracking of variants. We see and the yellow and red that Delta was with us for some time. That's been our last surge right before Omicron, and then now we're experiencing Omicron. So this is just letting you know that there are public dashboards if you're interested in tracking variants, and the variants do align up well with kind of what we're seeing as far as our cycles. Next slide, please. So what do we know across the cycles? So with each cycle, we are seeing disproportionate impacts of the pandemic across cases and hospitalizations. This slide here is a cumulative look at COVID-19 in Washington County. So when we look at the cumulative cases by race and ethnicity versus the proportion of our Washington County population that was estimated, we see that we have inequities. And so specifically on this graph, we identify that we have in our overall case rate for our Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Latinx community, throughout the nearly two years, they're still experiencing disproportionate burden. So they have more cases than they have than we have representation as far as residents in our community. And I believe the Commissioners had a great update on data just on Tuesday. So next slide, please. When we think about hospitalizations across the cycles, we are also seeing disproportionate experience in our marginalized communities. And so here, our Hispanic, Latino, Latinx community is experiencing hospitalizations. And so although not displayed here, when we think back to those 90-day cycles, our local and statewide data demonstrate that each of the waves of COVID-19 differentially impact communities of color. So you can look at it cumulatively, and you can look at it by wave, and we are seeing the inequities. And these inequities are being addressed and need to continue to be addressed in our COVID-19 response and as we are talking about developing thoughtful recovery strategies. And at this point in the pandemic, we have effective interventions. We have lots of tools. And one of the most effective interventions and strategies to prevent severe disease and hospitalization is our COVID-19 vaccination and also our boosters. Next slide, please. So as we, oh, there we go. Thank you. So with our COVID-19 vaccination, we still have a statewide goal of reaching 80% of our 18 and older population. And when we look at our successes, Washington County is leading the state across all the vaccination metrics we have for our rarest race and ethnicity categories displayed here. However, it is still important to note that we have community members that still have not had an opportunity to be vaccinated. We still have inequities. And so when you have disproportionate burden of cases and you have lower vaccination rates, we're now talking about some compounding vulnerabilities and community burdens. And so we are still working towards helping our community with our mobile vaccination efforts and other efforts to help our community reach this goal of 80%. And then also, we're going to continue to help with boosters, and those goals come from our CDC and OHA. And next slide, please. Okay. The, as Dorian mentioned, we're already experiencing the impacts of Omicron. We're experiencing them, and we're going to continue to experience them. We've seen schools impacted, school closures. We've seen surges in cases and hospitalizations. We just identified some vaccine equity concerns. We have overburdened healthcare systems, and we also have underreporting of COVID-19 cases in our investigative guidelines. The testing that is required to come to public health are the lab-based test results. So our home-based tests are not required to be reported to public health. And so as more of those become available in our community, it's a good thing. And it also means that we know that our measure of burden in our community is going to be underreported. We will continue to see some increased absences and workforce challenges. You may see things missing from the shelves at the grocery store still because we're still in that 90-day wave right now. So as we move forward, we need to continue to focus on vaccine and our health and our economic equity efforts. And so at this point, next slide, please. We want to turn over to Dr. Rep to address some of the common questions. Dr. Rep helps represent Washington County in many of our media interviews because she is one of our leading experts, and so I will turn this over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Bowman-Davis. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here today. My name is Kim Rep. I'm the Chief Epidemiologist for our county. And today, I'm going to talk about some of the common questions that have been asked from the public and in media the past month or so. And these questions are, where are we at right now with the pandemic? What's going to come next? And when do we start to get to treat COVID like influenza? When is it just going to be part of daily life? Next slide, please. This is what we're looking at here is the state of Oregon and the caseload from December to January. As you can see, we had about 8,000 cases a week statewide in January. We had 1,000 a week in Washington County specifically. As case counts go up, I think we are all aware that our public health efforts and response has to increase. The outbreak management, the community need for services, our residents who are honoring our requests for quarantine and isolation and need that support increase when we have increased case counts. Next slide, please. We have been talking about inequities in our community across racial and ethnic lines, and I wanted to also acknowledge one of perhaps the most jaw-dropping disparities in health outcomes is through unvaccinated versus vaccinated individuals. A person who is unvaccinated, the group is likely to have eight times more COVID cases. We know that the hospitalization rates are considerably higher, and death is also exceptionally higher in persons who are unvaccinated. And as Dr. Bowman-Davis said earlier, we do have breakthrough cases. So people who are vaccinated that still get infected, however, those outcomes are, as you can see very clearly on here, they are considerably lower than those who are unvaccinated, and the disease is much less severe in that particular group. And we care about this because this helps us focus our efforts as well. So in terms of compounding effects in the community, like Dr. Bowman-Davis said, not only do you have the unvaccinated on top of marginalized communities, on top of all the social determinants that come into play there to affect that, that's a lot of different factors that deeply affect an individual in our community's ability to access healthcare and to make it through their case of COVID. Next slide, please. Yes, the modeling are our favorite. So Dr. Graven at OHSU and his team have been doing these amazing modelings the entire pandemic, and he's been doing a great job. What you're looking at here, and we've had a new forecast since this one, but you're looking at basically the hospitalization count for Oregon. And you can see Delta, we got up to 1,200-ish, and that was pretty devastating to our healthcare system. I think we can all remember that. And at this time for this forecast, which was January 20th, the prediction was over 1,500 cases. The revised forecast that came out a couple of days ago, it's going to be closer to what Delta was, and the peak should happen in a few days. We know that hospitalization counts are delayed about seven to 10 days after our case counts. And as we probably noticed, our case counts are going down, which means our hospitalizations will peak shortly. So that's what we're expecting. We are still having record-high hospitalizations. We know that our healthcare system is exhausted and overwhelmed. We are going to have a decrease by the end of February for our hospitalizations in cases. It's not going to be a perfect, easy, quick, two-week drop-off where we go back to zero cases. Again, throughout this pandemic, we have never gone back to where we were before the pandemic. Like, we've never dropped that low again, or frankly, even close to it. So what you're looking at here is Omicron. And we're talking a lot about new variants, and I'll talk about this a little bit more. But what we don't see on here is this is Omicron, right? So there are sub-variants of Omicron. Some of you have probably heard about Stealth Omicron taking over Denmark and other areas. So we're not done. It's great to look at Omicron and be like, yes, we're going to be done with this wave in, you know, maybe a month or so. But we're not done in general. We care about these hospitalizations because of when the healthcare capacity is exceeded, it doesn't just affect people who have COVID that need to get it. It affects people who are in car crashes. It affects people who have strokes. It affects people who have absolutely nothing to do with COVID, not being able to access care, lifesaving care. So that is a huge ripple effect on our community across the board when our hospital capacity is exceeded. So as Public Health and Health and Human Services, we keep a very, very close eye on our hospital capacity and our hospitalizations for that reason because it affects the community so much. Next slide, please. All right, time to get out the crystal ball that we all know and love. So what's going to happen next? So even the best modeling in the world, like the best in the world, World Health Organization models, no one will go past 90 days. So I just want to disclose that for everyone here. Nobody really knows the answer, but I'm going to summarize what the best experts in the world are telling us at this point. So as we have alluded to this entire presentation, the further along we go in this pandemic, the more the inequities are exacerbated, right? So the more people who don't have access to vaccine or healthcare access, that just amplifies and amplifies and amplifies each time we go through one of these waves. So we absolutely have to consider, continue centering equity and looking at our most vulnerable populations, whatever they may be, and focus our efforts in a targeted manner to make sure we address those inequities as much as we can. The other, the not-so-awesome news is that the experts are predicting a fully vaccine-evasive variant as soon as March. So as we know, we do have breakthrough infections. That would be considered vaccine-evasive, but they are talking about a complete vaccine-evasive variant. And I'm going to talk about how we can avoid this in the future shortly after this slide. But that's what's coming up next, and from a biological perspective, that actually makes a lot of sense because as the virus evolves, it wants to infect as many people as possible. And the next step, we saw Omicron bumped up. We started getting breakthrough cases. So the next step would be completely bypassing the vaccine. So that would make sense. And because of that, people are getting sick, even if they have less severe illness, which is awesome because of the vaccine, that is going to affect our workforce and supply chain problems. Even though people are able to work remote for some positions across the county, if you have COVID, you can't work even when you're at home, right? So it's not necessarily a bypass. And of course, all our first responders and our grocery staff, all the people that we depend on to survive, they will not be able to report to work with COVID. So I would expect that we would continue to see impacts of supply chains as these waves continue, when they are in the hospital with COVID, can take, and it reduces the length of hospitalization and/or avoids death. That's great. As I think we all know, we just got our Pfizer vaccine for our younger people, and that's going to come on board soon. So there's a lot of, the science is also keeping up as best as we can with what the virus is doing, and we're coming at it from every single angle. And every day that goes by, we get closer to either, you know, a better universal vaccine, a new treatment, or anything that we can do to reduce the impact of this virus on our community. Next slide, please. Now, the question that would be completely logical to ask, so why are we getting vaccinated if nature is going to create a vaccine-evasive variant? Totally makes sense. So we have probably in the country, I don't know, maybe close to a million more people alive that would be dead if they hadn't been vaccinated, probably more. We know this number is thousands for our Washington County residents. So the presence of a vaccine has kept thousands and thousands of people alive that would otherwise be dead, either from exacerbated hospital capacity or just medical fragility, any of those things. So the vaccine keeps us alive. It keeps us from being hospitalized more than being unvaccinated. And most importantly, it prevents death. Vaccines are not in place to stop infections. They're there to keep you from dying, and they're there to keep you from being hospitalized, and they are doing their job in that way. So what are we going to do as scientists if the virus bypasses what we have now? Well, we're going to do what we always do. We're going to make something else. We're going to make something better. Now, there's going to be a lag, of course, just like any other science or treatment, but that doesn't mean we're done or we're throwing in the towel. And then, of course, there are actually multiple pharmaceutical companies working on a universal vaccine. So this is going to continue, but from a biological perspective, I would expect that we would continue to see sort of the virus evolving in a way that evades our current vaccines. Next slide, please. Okay, so everything that we do in EpiLand revolves around this triangle, absolutely everything. So what is this triangle? There are three elements, and all of these elements have to be in place for a person to get sick. If one of the elements are not in place, a person cannot get sick. So you have the host, which is the person, our community members that can get infected. The agent is the virus, in our case, SARS-CoV-2. And the environment means the place where the agent and the host interact. So does the environment exist in a way where the virus can come in contact with humans? So all three of those have to be in place in order for one person to get infected. And next, please. So what we are doing is we are trying to break one of the bonds of that triangle. And what we are trying to do is prevent the agent, the virus, from being able to infect the host. So all the public health interventions that we are talking about, whether it's physical distancing, whether it's vaccination, whether it's wearing masks, all of those behaviors are trying to break that edge of the triangle. Because if that is broken, the virus can no longer infect us. From a biological perspective, it really is this simple. We just have to break one of the bonds on this triangle. Now, we can do any of them, and we're trying to do a lot of different ones. Like, the physical distancing is changing the environment so the virus can't get to the host, right? Like, all the things that we're trying to do are attacking different bonds of this triangle. So one area where we can start living with like flu is if we actually successfully prevent the virus from infecting us. And that can be through, you know, treatment, medication, natural immunity, vaccination, physical distancing, masking, all those things that we're already doing. So that is one way we can start living with this. Next slide. This is the second way. Let's say we, as a population, can't get our stuff together enough to break one of the bonds of the triangle, okay? And that's a global situation, right? That's not a Washington County-specific situation. So let's say we keep it all intact. We let the virus infect. We keep going. Next slide. We will live with COVID like we do with flu. When COVID infections or COVID season happens, when COVID infections or COVID season happens and it doesn't destroy our healthcare system? So right now, or previous to now, we have influenza season every year. We know that. We go get our flu vaccines. It does not, with the exception of H1N1, it does not incapacitate our healthcare system, right? Our healthcare system can handle that load every year. So when we get to the point with the virus where we can go through a season and it does not threaten our hospital capacity, that is when we will start living with COVID like it's influenza. That will be, that is how we will know, okay, this is part of our lives. It's not a threat to our, you know, collapsing our healthcare system. And we can continue on with our lives to the best of our ability. So those are the two ways, quite simply, that this goes so we can start basically living with COVID in a more natural manner like we do with influenza. So I am going to turn it over back to Dr. Bowman Davis to take us through the planning considerations.
Thank you, Dr. Rep. So the kind of key messages here is that we're experiencing ninety-day surge cycles, right? And so although, as Dr. Rep mentioned, the impacts are going to continue to vary. Hopefully, this, the virus continues to change and become less severe so that we can live with it like the flu. It doesn't harm our healthcare system. We're going to need to continue to stay on top of surveillance and monitoring and working with our communities as we move through these ninety-day cycles. Dr. Rep also mentioned respiratory flu season and respiratory virus season. That's part of what we see in these cycles is that the more we're indoors, the more the virus spreads, the more we're outdoors, the fewer cases we have, the less the virus spreads. So that kind of, that's a little bit of stability and predictability that we have now in some cycles. We also still have work to do to continue to address disparities and the disproportionate burdens on marginalized populations. Dr. Rep mentioned social determinants of health, that, you know, kind of the systematic and structural inequities that existed pre-COVID. And then now with this ongoing COVID experience that we're having, kind of the cumulative burdens that need to be addressed and new variants. They'll continue to come. Some are going to be variants of interest, some are going to be variants of concern. And what this means for planning is that our systems are going to need to continue to be responsive and flexible as the commissioners have been supporting us with. And also proactively address the inequities. And so as Dr. Rep mentioned, when we have higher cases, that means there's usually higher community need for supports, business supports. And then fewer cases, we have lower kind of need and requests. And so being flexible and responsive is going to be important. And I believe, next slide, I will be turning this back over to Dorian.
Thanks so much. So what does this mean for our work, really interpreting and applying this for the services we provide in the county? First, the pandemic is not going away yet. That's the first takeaway. We're going to have to continue addressing those household, economic and community needs that were mentioned throughout this presentation. Second, underscoring again that there will continue to be inequities. We see that with every single wave thus far. And what this means for our work is that we need to have an increased commitment to addressing disproportionate impacts to marginalized communities through our work. Third, challenging work continues for us on the horizon. We're not done yet. We're continually assessing pandemic realities and making sure that we are continuing to be in that state of learning to provide resilient and flexible operations. Next slide, please. So I mentioned to you on Tuesday that this is, that our meeting on Tuesday was part one of two. This is part of our continued conversation. And the data interpretation that you had today will be useful in the long run in applying that information to your future ARPA decisions. What this means right now for ARPA, for people, this means a continued need for investment, really understanding that we continue to have pandemic impacts to businesses, schools, families and individuals. For our services, this means we need to continue to follow our framework values in protecting public health, leading with equity, leaning into collaboration, planning for resilience and making sure that we have good governance. We're continuing to identify needs for the board in this way. And finally, looking ahead for future investment planning, we're currently forecasting how far the current fund allocations will carry for our existing response needs, thinking about community wellness and the economic investments that we've made. We're going to continue to help you to identify what your priorities are for future ARPA frameworking. I want to underscore again that our ARPA work continues to have great impact, especially as we continue to go through these ninety-day cycles of pandemic variants. It's really important that the previous decisions that you've made with science in mind have had really important outcomes, both in response and for recovery. While we're facing really difficult realities for what both of these scientists have shown, and we're still very much in the pandemic, better times are ahead. And with continuous learning and adjustment and using the tools that scientists from across the country and across the world continue to innovate, we will get there. Next slide, please. And finally, I want to interpret some next steps for you with this information. Your board and staff, there's opportunity to integrate the learnings from these pandemic projections in our planning for ARPA and in other ways as well. We're doing our best to help you fully understand the most up-to-date science. And secondly, helping you to have evidence-informed strategic conversations. And what I mean by evidence-informed is really making sure that you have a strong grounding and strong understanding and what the most up-to-date data and information are telling us so that you're able to lead with the science, making decisions that have been double and triple-checked by the best information to date. Next slide, please. That's all the information that we have for you today. Again, this is a part of a continued conversation. So thank you for the time today for this important conversation.